If you'd all hurry for the pledge of allegiance. We're pledging allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope we approach the agenda, but not necessarily in that order.
A second to that?
All right.
I'd like to... Okay, on to the agenda. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No questions here. Consent agenda?
Like to pull the fire calls?
Yes.
We should discuss that in general.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, this is maybe a moment of levity and maybe I'm the only one who remembers it, but these meetings remind me of the old Get Smart show that I watched as a kid. And they would have a cone of silence where the chief and Get Smart would have a cone of silence, have the Plexiglas thing came down, and they both sat in their little tube and said, "What did he say?" So, for tonight's meeting, because we require to wear masks, eventually the air conditioning will kick on, I just ask that if you think you're yelling at us, just yell louder so we know. That's all I ask. So with that, consent agenda. The reason I asked to pull the fire calls is I had a call from a gas fire person to ask if they could get relieved from the fire charge. I said I would discuss it with the board. I asked three questions. They said, "How long have you been in the town?" They said, "Approximately two years." I said, "Where did you come from?" They said, "Blaine, Minnesota." And I said, "Where did you come from before there?" They said, "Ramsdale." And I asked them if they were able to burn the home Alice, and were you able to burn after you hired in those two municipalities, and they said no. So, they have every right to ask. Is it the consensus of the board, would you like to do anything?
Would you do it intentionally by the time?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Yeah, they just didn't... It was in the spring and they had too many, they basically burned a lot.
Ingrates to the laws and excuses.
Yeah. So I gave them the 4701 emergency number, explained how we don't charge for the call, you know, to call in for your permit, but that was readily available on our website. And they did have to send out everybody to help put it out.
Which one was that 4-0? Was that the one?
It was Mr. Lee, I think it was.
Oh, it was last month? Okay.
Yeah, I think it was on Lassie.
Yeah, I recognize the name. Okay.
So I promised them I'd ask the boards, is there any half a time for the board to waive that fee?
No.
No, no. Okay. Hearing none, then we'll share that with the board.
Ken had a question before you came in. How long do they carry a floor who add to the tax roll when we send it to the state? And I didn't know the answer.
Uh, three... It's a total of four, because I billed three months and then on the fourth one they get the notice on the bill that it will be sent to the state for collection. And if I...
Four places.
Four places on the tax bill, depends.
Okay, okay. Nice to know the answer.
Yeah, we wait a little, quite a while. Yeah, it's not instantaneous.
Okay.
Yeah, no. Want to give them ample time.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other thing I will mention before we get off of this. Remember last month I mentioned with Brian Worth, the pool covers? Brian said ninety percent or more have a power cover on. He said that power cover is fifteen thousand dollars. The average pool cover is fifty thousand dollars. So, but Amanda said she would. I'm surprised to see on this one that it doesn't say whether they got, would put behind the pool cover, power cover. But I will remind her again of that, just so... I did get an answer on it. Okay? That's it.
The only other thing I would ask on the trip here to court, with Chris's help and Vicki's help, we transferred a million dollars from the Citizens Bank to First National Bank.
Better interest rate.
Yep, so thank you for that.
As bad as the interest rates are, there was quite a difference, so we moved it.
Especially on the mortgage holders.
Yeah.
Do you have additional bills here, Chris?
I gave you an updated one, Frank. I laid it out there. They're on the bottom.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So with that, do I hear a motion to move the consent agenda?
Pull.
Yeah, second. Second, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Morning's carried.
Committee reports.
Wait, you need a motion on the fire calls. You called it from the consent agendas, and I need to approve the ones.
I would move the approval of the billing for the two fire calls.
Yeah, there's three calls.
There are three, yeah. One of mine is handed out. So you don't... But anyway, whatever it is.
Good.
Yeah, one of the white dollars. So what is the billing on that?
Two hundred and fifty dollars for a fire call, and if there's no permit, it's an additional two hundred and fifty, so the bill is a total of five hundred.
If the motion's made for your second agenda?
Yeah.
I'll start with that. Can all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Morning's carried.
Fire. Haven't yet, but I nailed everybody this today, so I don't know if you got time to open it this morning. About two weeks ago, Scott C. Martin, the fire chief, just so everybody sees it, sent a email off to Bill Olms and I. Bill is the city representative on the fire advisory board, and I'm the town of Hudson representative and chairman of the advisory board. The Zodiac, which was better off for ages, is a cheap rubber raft that hit something on the river. It was twenty-one hundred dollars to fix, and it wasn't worth twenty-one hundred dollars. This is a used raft that Whaler is off of Hagan Street, and they can pick it up for ten thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars. I told Scott I didn't think we needed to meet as a fire advisory board, but electronically send it out to each one of the municipal representatives, ask them for their opinion, and then have Bill take it to the council, and we'll move forward to the council in two weeks to get approval. He has sixty-nine thousand dollars worth of contingency funds to pay for. So it's not like it's, you know, going to take additional funds, and I just got to report that. And that's it for fire.
So the used item, is that a fraction of the normal retail?
Yes, it is. A fraction of the cost. But, and it's an upgrade from what the Zodiac was.
Well, it is.
More enriched.
Yeah, more enriched, yeah.
Do they still have another vote in the way?
No. I don't... Well, I don't know that. I don't have the answer to that. The dive... They may have it, because the dive team used that.
Yeah, let's go.
And the dive team moved to the police department. It's a... And so even if you're sitting on EMS, you wouldn't know that either, because the dive team moved to the police department. So I would assume that they do. When I go again, I can remember Kurt Levy when I was on EMS saying, when the dive team would go up, it very rapidly moved from rescue to recovery. You know, it didn't take long. If you didn't have a person rescued, you were just trying to find the body. And with the current river, it was tough to not end up going to the discovery.
Did they also...
No. The hall, they haven't opened the fire hall yet. They haven't decided what they're going to do. She said the last time I talked to her, instead of this week, it would probably be October before they would have an open house.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Any other library?
No, nothing. We have another meeting tomorrow, right?
Okay. Wisconsin Towns Association, we were scheduled for last Thursday, I think it was the 23rd, and that got canceled. EMS, we have a meeting coming up on August 11th. And that's actually at the, at the new fire station. And I think that's it for committee reports. Chairman's report. I was keeping very short for these meetings. We've had a lot of meetings this month on a variety of issues. We have a ton of water came down on June 29th. As a result of that, we had flooding on Trump Brook Road, Hillary Farm Road, and Indigo Lots. And we're working with the neighbors and the company on looking at some stormwater management issues that could potentially help them mitigate some of their flooding issues. Public comment. Does anyone want to speak on public comment tonight? Is this on your mind? Okay. Roads, we're starting the shoulder work. The chip ceilings begin on Thursday, so we see some shoulder work, or your complaints from your neighbors. That's part of the plan. We've got to keep our right of ways clear so we can have places to haul the snow, put our utilities, add the chips, and keep it great. All right. Summer Curry first edition final plan. I may have mentioned it last month, but we were set up today to keep social distancing. If you come up, just to where the first bench is, and speak with love as you possibly can, that'll be great.
Right. Summer Curry first edition, seven lots, or eleven lots, sorry. Seven are two-family lots, and then four single-family lots. The add felt has been turned into the county. And the lots are exactly as they were on the culinary flat. Nothing has changed with them dimension-wise or anything in regards to that. So soil tests are all done and turned in. The four single-family lots are two point five nine, two point five nine eight per acre, so that continues to meet that as we go through. Any questions in regards to the final plan?
Total acres for his first edition? I forgot that question when I asked for the other.
Oh, it's... Who knows? It is...
You can just call me about this tomorrow.
I'll call you with that.
Yeah, I don't think it's on there. I forgot to remember to give you the stuff. I forgot to ask when I asked for the other stuff.
Actually, thirty-one point three acres.
Exclusive or brokering?
Correct, correct. Not exclusive or brokering, it's not included.
No, that's what I'm looking for. Exclusive, thirty-one point three.
Nope. The seven, between the lots, is that the three acres?
More than any questions if they want for the ask vote?
You ready for a motion?
I am.
I move approval of the final plan for summer Curry first edition subdivision for the Urchins LLC, located in the Minneapolis Yachting, consisting of eleven lots and a person one and a half acres. I'm not going to read that, sorry. Supposedly their own lot numbers from the flat shown as four through...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. And flat review fee of three hundred and fifty dollars a lot for a total of three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, payable to the town of Hudson Road signs, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is a stop sign, a street sign on Benny Circle, all the other signs. I just realized, I forgot to call Joe today. We got to move the dead end sign, to change it, that's on, move to a no outlet.
Go to no outlet.
There's a common question that we change that to no outlet. And it'll keep moving.
Yeah, just kind of.
As it goes through the development.
Okay.
Three blacktop to be completed with a compacted thickness of three inches, done in two lifts. Within one year from today, work not completed requires an extension request to the town board, and irrevocable standby letter of credit for a period of not less than two years in the amount of sixty thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars based on forty-one dollars per foot, including shoulders, should be given to the town for one thousand four hundred and seventy-five feet of roadways between Benny Circle and the blue road. For developers shall pay fifty dollars to the town Hudson to cover the cost of the fire in the very street half of the final plan. This subdivision is also subject to the approval of the processes in the community development department. Number six, the developer shall pay a figure of two hundred and fifty dollars to cover the cost of town blacktop inspection. The town has said the town shall provide a warranty to provide inspection, maintenance, and repairs for the retention pods, gaming trays, and corners, and give the subdivision CSI as required. Eight, the developer shall pay the town two hundred and twenty-five dollars a lot.
One twenty-five?
What's the... One hundred and twenty-five dollars for a lot, and a total of one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for the town Hudson, where administration's firm already completes. Number nine, the developer shall remove any previous existing field accesses and driveways not going to be used. Ten, classification of all roads and subdivision zones set as class E highways. Number eleven, final plan approval continued upon all fees being paid within one week to the final plan approval. Number twelve, players slash house numbers of sixty dollars a lot, total of one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. And the reason for that is it's twenty-one, it's seven duplex lots at two sites.
Right, two, three.
They have four, um, single-family ones. Two, four.
The three were from the other, and I never forgot.
Bill. Oh, it's three of...
Oh, because they had a reflection.
Yeah. I didn't realize that Joe Harris was going to change it to, which I'd like, just so everybody knows. GSI specialist that's in by following the site, instead of all the duplexes, eight fifty to AMB, there'll be a number on your site of the driveway information. I didn't... We should have done that, please, I don't know why they didn't do that. It's a much better idea. It really is. So that's why we're picking up, the signs are in, and dropped them off at the family garage Monday morning, and Joe had been going up, I'm going to four lot mine, and he had three plus number four, which is already going up.
Yeah.
It's now in order, and as soon as I get the other numbers, we can get back to that. The developer shall place any mailboxes on all the cul-de-sacs, which in this case is Benny Circle.
Yeah, oh, I think they're cul-de-sacs, I believe, requiring throughout the second meeting.
No.
Not just the cul-de-sac. Everybody does the paperwork.
Interesting.
Interesting.
How do you tell us that?
I agree.
And I see it inside of the balcony.
Yeah.
He's got a tiny number with the flowers.
So you're not paying for that no outlet sign, because you already paid for the dead end.
Oh, okay.
Let that go, just going to swap it out.
Okay, perfect.
Just so you know, that dead end sign, we moved to the end of Curry Lane. When it's out looking for shoulder, the guy stopped in a chat, and he said, "You know, I've been asking for years. You go all the way to the catch, and there's a cart, and you can move down to the end." He said, "People come down, and cul-de-sacs respond, so get a dead end sign down here. I'll move it down there." You know, for years it was, I mean, years. I thought I'd leave that before I got on the planning permission, so I moved through there, just so you know.
So did you email around with all that criticism?
I will.
Good.
And then just have Janet call me, because the office is open, so I'll end up having to hurry and then see what happens.
Okay, perfect.
Has there been a motion made here, second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the hold?
Then that may be to assign them a 11 by 17 sign, a date, a map.
Is anyone of you here?
Assigning data, it's the same after you do. That way I can get that to tell me, if you're like, you know that you're looking at.
Anywhere, just say no, just a little bit.
Yes.
It'll probably be a couple of days before I can organize, just because, fire numbers, just because Joe asked to go.
Yeah.
The day he was here, to me, right away. Joe, you asked to go through your office, gave it to me.
Perfect. Let me start.
Karen.
I'll send it to the morning.
Okay.
Connected revenue, the library. This is something you have to hear, you're having...
Yes.
I don't think any of the streets, all the other areas, we... Okay, first, I heard a motion, we do about moving the floor. Second. You get a second? Any further discussion on this? No. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the hold? Morning's carried.
Next, we have a two-lot CSM on Scott Road for Todd and Lori Johnson. Hey, John?
Hello. Johnson, I'm Ted, here in behalf of the Johnsons, who are present tonight, as well as their daughter and son-in-law. And fairly straightforward as far as this layout, they're looking to... The daughter's son-in-law are in Bill towards the back of lot two. We've looked at the building site, and have played around with good scenarios that worked back there. They own a little over seventeen acres currently, so the existing residence will remain roughly fifteen acres, and then the new lot will be two point three, if you go out to the center line, or two point two-two, if you go to the right of way. The proposed driveway will be straight across from, there's another driveway on the opposite side of Scott Road, and that, this proposed driveway is probably about two, maybe two-twenty from the current driveway, maybe a little less. And then the other driveway to the south is probably pushing fifty to four hundred feet, that driveway. We've done soil tests out there, to make sure the system could go in, and the companies reviewed it, and the only conditions they had was town approval, and then the typical company surveyor approval. And they did talk to Friday Hall today, and he did, he actually said to me that, Sarah, to say, well, he's not the best as he is. Other than that, not a whole lot to say about this. Are there any questions?
Yeah, future development. The planning permission talks about future development. And with the driveway separation, Johnny wanted to know where the plan was for future development for the remaining portion that they want to.
Yeah, and we looked at three to four scenarios, just to make sure that, at the end, the biggest thing is we just make sure we keep the house.
And I get that.
And so we looked at...
Everything looks okay with the lot. I just wanted to know where the future road will go.
Well, that could be any number. We looked at the option that if they come right through the property, the cul-de-sac, you know, right down the middle, and they could split where the current houses and the existing house.
Do you have sufficient driveway separations, if you're...
Yeah, they have an agreement. What they would do is the driveway of the new house would just come off.
Oh, come off of there.
Yeah, and so they'll maintain an agreement with one another that if they do ever do something, that they'll work together, and if there's any modifications to this new driveway, then it'll come off the new road. But we also looked at somebody, if, you know, even the property over to itself, in origin, they develop, what that would look like, you know, there's multiple things that could happen. And it's not...
Okay, that's all I have.
Other questions?
That was my question too, so I'll take a second.
Yeah, it's a good thing they'll keep it in the band, and they'll be able to make adjustments immediately.
You ready?
I am.
I would move approval for Todd and Lori Johnson, a two-lot CSM on thousand and five Scott Road. On two point, lot two is two point five nine acres, and lot one at fifteen point oh two acres, with a fee of sixty dollars for a house number and three hundred and fifty dollars for a flat review fee.
And the CSM is also subject to the approval processes in the community development, and final approval condition upon all fees being paid within one week of final plot approval.
Thank you.
Could you just say the acre to get on mine, mine is two point, uh...
Three four.
Three four.
Oh.
Small tax, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
That's the problem.
I was reading the planning permission.
But don't, you should have just done the most likely we had it, instead of add.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, so I would say that's...
You're second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All the hold? Morning's carried. Thank you.
Your end sign, I have it.
Thank you very much.
Beautiful one. Favor you or not?
Yeah.
We had this pleasure to see this.
Right.
For the best part.
Welcome to the main course.
Welcome to the main course, the developer year plan, too, too.
And I know, and the intent at this point is lots of development, because I'm locked in for another three years. Sure, my forest property. But they can bail out any time, and only have to go back and pay ten, ten years in back debt, so I... I talk a little forever.
Thank you.
Because that room has been backed down the back, so that would work.
Okay, Nick, we have Tim Stank, who's right here.
Little, I'm Kurt Mears with Walters buildings, here on behalf of Tim Stank, TDI table. He proposed to build a thousand square foot key storage building, that's seven fifty-one ceiling.
Just a little bit, it was just like your yell in the background.
Okay. So his ultimate plan is just to get as much inside as he can, which finishes the strip of trucks, whatever it might be.
I have a couple of questions, including with this.
Ultimately, it's a drive-through building, probably.
So your proposals to come off Sturman's Drive?
Yep. They're in the cul-de-sac, same driveway.
And I know you're at Walters, but have your engineers and everybody looked at this? Can you get, you're going to use the existing, your proposals to use the existing driveway?
Correct, yes.
Okay, because I get really steep there to the north of that driveway.
Yeah. Yeah, this building, the two buildings are parallel to each other, but this building is significantly shorter than the one there.
What was the question?
I just figured, because I was going to bill sixty dollars for a fire number, because it looked like a new driveway, but now when I look at it...
There may be a fire number there now. I think there is, yeah.
And I think we built them when the other building was, should have been, yeah.
So we gave us an average at the time of seven fifty-one.
Okay.
The other thing I want to get into discussion tonight is, I know these buildings back to the east were some of the original grandfathered-in buildings with gravel roads and gravel driveways, so... But we do require paving for all of our buildings now, under existing code. And I do notice that we have people parking on the streets to the east. So I guess I'm curious, it looks like we don't have enough attic parking there today.
Well, I think, so his, uh, so he is, uh, what is he on, he's a farmer or something on the other side? So he's basically a drive-through from Sturman up to Hill. The main plan, so he owned a building on Brackey Drive that was, Thirty-five Auto Care was operating out of it. And he sold that building to Hindu, who's two doors down. And so he had some indoor storage there. He's trying to consolidate everything on the lot, and then all the parking's going to run right down the fence line. So his intention is to take everybody off the street and the cul-de-sac.
I understand what you just said, Don, because all the trucks, as you came in off of... I understand what you just said, Don, because all the trucks, as you came in off of exchange, all the trucks used to sit to the south of the building. So what he's saying is those trucks are now going this Walter building, and the employees can park where the trucks used to be, to get them off of exchange, which is good.
The hardest thing he had is he couldn't park anybody in his back lots, because the truck would have to come in, turn around. So there was no room for anybody to place a car inside of that.
The reason I asked that would be great, you know, the site plan, show, show some of the sketches on here for us. Because if your existing building is here, your existing traffic is up here.
Yeah, I think it's listed as hard weather surface, you know, surface.
It does say that.
And what he's been doing in, because asphalt does hold up so well, he's been hooked in like six to eight inches of asphalt millings and then have it rolled. So it ends up being well over street thickness. He hasn't got the last section of it done right down by the cul-de-sac, so there is a little bit of classified gravel that's attracting a little dust out in the parking or into the cul-de-sac. But the plan is get the building up and then get the whole thing, you know, rolled out.
Okay, I'm not challenging it in any way today, I just want to make sure we talk about this in a public setting.
Yeah.
Okay. We see other site plans come in, and they're very detailed. They show us where the parking are, and where the landscaping is, and where the truck docks are, and that's based on our ordinance that we have. And I can say, this is the third building out that we're looking at out here, and we've got a lot of traffic that's sitting parking out on the road, not on the street. And this was not clear for the planning commission presentation, how that was going to be taken care of. I know out there, look at the Sturman's, if you go up to Sturman's Drive cul-de-sac, there could be gravel around these buildings, not that.
Yep.
It's called classified tailings, whatever it would be, you know, your Batumis. So where exactly are you proposing with that? Are you gonna?
So all the hard weather surface areas.
All of them?
It is all intended to be asphalt millings and then rolled out. So it's significantly bigger than what you'd get on a road, because trucks are turning on it.
Right.
Yeah, it would just tear up a regular, regular three and split.
Plus it should drain some.
Yeah, the, you know, his basic plan is the parking's all the way down the fence line to the south. So now he can park from the top of the hill all the way down, and he doesn't have anybody in the cul-de-sac.
Okay, I just have, I just have a question, you may or may not know, does he own the land between this existing building and the school district building?
Yes, he does.
He does?
He does, yes.
So there could be an additional building that could be put in there at some point?
If you get in the future, he bought it, I think, maybe more on speculation than anything. But he understands that that would, or he, it came to me saying that would be a masonry building, if he built one, and it would be strictly an office building. But as of right now, he doesn't have any intentions, other than to sit on that lot for some time and sell it possibly.
Well, we want to be good neighbors, and we welcome him as a business. The reason I ask that is clearly when you transition from your southern building, you're going from, you have outdoor.
Right.
Dust reel, you have security fencing but no screening.
Certainly.
Gravel lots, truck traffic, people parking on the road, I'm not making it negative. And then you go to two commercial buildings that are blanketed by both sides with sort of special children's and the school district.
Right.
Those are my questions, I, if the board wants to make an allowance for that crushed Batumis, or whatever we're gonna call it, I think we need, it needs to be in the motion, and it needs to be completed like we do lifts of pavement. For a commercial building, but we'd have to treat you the same as my position is to.
I get it. Yeah, I think Brian were a little concerned about just straight up asphalt, because you're going from an elevation of ten feet higher all the way to the bottom by the time that, you know, the water hit that. So he was, as I talked to separately, he was in favor of a base that maybe could slow things down a little bit.
The parking needs to be in the motion too, because it's been an ongoing problem.
I agree. I agree.
Other discussion from the other four members?
The only other discussion I have done is if we've re-looked this, I think we should do some changes in a lot of that as a permitted use. If we want six inches of re-ground blacktop to be compacted. As a board, I think we should get some of our engineering information and then have a discussion and make that a proof use. You know what I mean? Go through the steps to make sure we do that. I'm okay with this, with this one, but I think we, we need to move forward with that.
Right. And I'm not trying to sound like a stuck record, other than like I said, we've gone from gravel to pavement. And anyone new that comes in has to do pavement, so now we're like, why are we doing this? Are you using, is this building using some of that now, where it looks like there might be a little driveway that has?
Well, in between the two buildings right now, it's classified, this is rhinestone.
Okay.
In between the two, and the intention is to get this building up, get all of our street. This is the last project he's building there, you know, at least that's at least fully, so. Plan is to get it all nice and clean, equip the truck, you know, the construction traffic, and then get it rolled out.
Is he pouring concrete in the building?
Yes.
Okay, I was curious. I guess my very last question again, just to reiterate it, have you, as a consultant and as a company, they laid out where these people are parking then?
It's, it's right down the fence line is what they're thinking.
Or is that following this wavey line up here just behind the building?
No, it's, so he owns the property up on the hill, so in the past, they haven't been able to park down the, what would be the south fence line, because of truck traffic having to turn around. Now where trucks can go straight from one street down the hill out the other street, so they don't have to turn around. The intention is that south fence line is for them to park. If you visit the property now and you see it goes so far and then stops, the plan is to let it run all the way down the hill to the old storage building that exists.
I understand this is for the board's discussion.
I think the motion, Don, basically ought to say that we're approving this so that the buildings can be, trucks can be stored inside, and all employee parking has to be in the. Contested blacktop area off the street.
Yeah, because Absen, Absen is showing us this.
Right.
I mean, this all sounds good.
I've been out there several times, we talked to Tim McGlynn, and what am I supposed to do? You're not supposed to park on a street.
Well, then you park along the fence, and then oops, we did not, we can't get the parking there we wanted, and we can't angle park it. So Absen, yeah, we're coming back with that, I think, I think this is a board, we need to make sure we have tight, tight discussions tonight. You want to say something?
I think he's got plenty of room, just from structural, linear standpoint, he's got lots of room to park now.
The other discussion amongst the board?
And the classified is gonna come out and the recycle is gonna go away?
I think it's overly, very over the top, so it's just giving us more space.
But then how deep are, okay, and then how deep are you planning to do the recycle?
Six. The plan is six inches.
On top of.
On top of what's there, and there's elevation to do that.
Six inches roll or roll to six?
I'm not exactly sure how he's done in the past, it's just the conversations that we've had. So I think they probably bring it in, spread it out, and roll it as they go.
So I guess I ask for a motion to move it to the floor and then further discussion from there, does anyone want to make a motion?
I would move approval of the, is it seven hundred and seventy, seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-six square feet building, or is it eight thousand?
Eight thousand sixteen square feet, actually.
Eight thousand sixteen square feet building. At seven fifty-one Sturman's with, um, downcast lighting and one handicap parking spot. And there will be six inches of re-ground blacktop material compacted on all of the current classified parking in both lots one and three. And all employee parking will be then on the existing lots one and three and no longer on the, any of the street locations. That's it.
So probably want to have a letter of credit or some, some had to follow up so we know that this has been done, just like we do with the pavement on the commercial properties, right?
We don't do that with commercial, we don't commercialize, just with developments. It's gotta be done within a year, do you think we put that in there, done within a year?
And if it's not, if it's not done within a year, then what?
Gotta come back within time for an extension if you want it. All year for today.
So I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking, so we have a clear, we have a clear delineation of what happens, because I still want us back in another cycle, will we park any more time?
I agree.
And I think we do have the ability to request that, so I believe we did over Highway twelve without commercial. Any other discussion on this? So your final motion is, has to be done within the year.
Yeah.
Right, one second. We have a motion, we have a second and further discussion. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the opposed, more to the chair. Thank you. Okay, next we have White's E B, their site plan on Harton Circle.
Hello, I'm Chad Martin, representing Harton Home and White's E B.
And I just asked the same thing, I know our architect didn't just tip off, and we're allowed to film in this.
Yep.
So if you just make a leave, you're yelling to somebody ten yards behind you, it would really help.
I will.
Nice building.
Thank you.
You want to give a little brief statement on it? You have a nice site plan, we start there?
Yeah. Yeah, we have some good partners with the architects and ACI of course here, so. Barack is actually one of our subcontractors for a residential, and he's building this building for, I guess, his business. And so warehouse and then his office space.
I look at your plan, a little, a little building up, a little block out above your second story, is that an office up there, or what is that?
Uh, it's basically a storage.
Storage?
Yep.
So it's more an architectural design element today then?
That's truly what, yeah, okay, that allocation there.
Because we just got done talking about parking, and when we start on yours, the eleven stall that you have is after the, people are there today currently, or based on the layout of the building to put that one in there?
So that is for basically employee, right, not employee, I'm sorry. I guess, uh, that's it. Yeah, not necessarily, well, yeah, maybe some contractors, clients that he would have coming in. The rear of the lot is where the employees would park on the back side, there's a fifty-foot asphalt apron in the back. The spots in the front were calculated based on the office space that I currently have.
And I, you know, asking a question, I just asked my quick two or three on the front office report. The, you have a potential septic fuel location, are you still playing around with where that would go, or are you violating that?
No, I think that's violated, so.
And I know there's really mental people that are already asking about your development, sort of trash exposure, and GM in the back, you may propose that dumpster then, is that what?
Yeah, it's right now, I don't know if there's an actual design shown here, but it'll match the existing building, I think it's party line setting on that portion.
I saw your landscaping plan. And your graded plan, Cammy and Sarah have approved this, are they still looking at it?
Um, I do not know, but I answered for sure.
Okay.
I can find that out. Yeah, I don't think I'm sure of that.
Those are my questions, okay.
The only question I have, uh.
Yes.
The future development, does that mean with real estate coverage on the lot, do you have that much building space to the other?
The future what?
Future development, eight two one, with that. It's quite a bit of advantage to both the north and south of that building, when you look at the front.
There's never been any discussion of any order.
It just, yeah. He threw it there. I look at it a lot, because when I look at all the stormwater on C three point oh, I think, man, he's, he's running everything up tight on both the north and south side of the lot lines with very great uses.
They were built that way, that's why the stormwater column is in the back, remember?
Well, when I look at where these are, and close to the lot lines, and where this is the evening juice, and the north and the south, you know what I mean, so. I think that was my only question.
Okay.
Maybe we wouldn't worry about that till it comes in.
Yeah, I don't, I have not heard anything else in the call.
Okay.
And that was the only.
Any others comment, any questions from the board?
I would move approval of this site plan, the driving, uh, the circle, going there, but I don't think we've decided to give it to the fire number, and we would approve it, make it so. There's no relation to us, it's totally the site.
Okay, then that assumes it puts all the letters in the comp, and that's all better than. Did I hear a second to that? This guy here? But I, I just, I just want to reaffirm, so this is really a nice building, basically a business, people show up to work, get in the trucks, go off to their different jobs, come back, drive home.
Basically, the.
Yep, that's, yep, so we would have maybe one delivery date, but if they're bringing in furnaces, then we'll stay in warehouse.
Okay.
And so that's why that back lot is big enough, then come back and turn around and whatnot, and then they have to basically come in in the morning and, um, and on the evening, so.
Okay, one other question, this is a tiny question, where's he looking at him out there?
Uh, so he is down in River Falls.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I was just curious.
Yep. Yeah, because a good business for us.
It's a very nice building, the sign is.
Yeah, that's kind of the premise of the whole property is.
He did a great job with his site plan and presentation, so I'm here now.
You did, you did a great job with your site plan and presentation, so I'm here now. Any further discussion before? Then a motion made to be seconded by him.
Yes.
All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Ex-ten Properties.
Well, I'm Louis Hilton, civil engineering. Steve McCarlin wasn't able to make it this evening, he's quarantining himself, he has a new grandchild as of yesterday, so he's helping out his family and sends his address, not able to show up this evening, but he wanted me to come in just in case there was questions or discussion on his proposal.
Louie, maybe to help you and help the board, I appreciate how loud you're talking, it's great. I've sat through the presentations twice now, but would it be, would it be helpful for you to give a brief presentation to our board?
Sure.
And as being filmed, the community as a whole, those which are the thoughts are. So would you be willing to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, of course, I'm not associated with the Ex-ten Properties business. Uh, it's a warehouse business, I'll do my best to summarize what they do. But it's a, kind of a short-term storage facility, semi-trucks roll in, things are stored there for weeks or months, and then their clients pick them up. There's not a lot of traffic associated with this project, it's a large building. Steve estimated somewhere around thirty to fifty trucks, semi-trucks a day when this is built out. There's room on the east side for expansion, I think the original building's around three hundred thousand square feet, I think it's another two hundred thousand or so on that side. And so I'm a civil engineer, land surveyor, soil tester, so I put the building part in a little week on, but I'll do my best. There's a loading dock along the south side, an office in the southwest corner. And what you're looking at is already a little bit out of date, because we learned shortly after the plant commission meeting that the DOT is going to deny access to Highway twelve on the west side of the property. So that is bad news for us, but Steve, Steve still thinks he can make it work with access on the north side, so one access on the north side to serve the property, and then semi-traffic will have to loop around the building. It's best to have it a circular pattern to have coming in one side and all the other. The site is about sixty-five acres, the building sits on the western side of the site, there will be some unused area to the east, and then if you're familiar with the site, you know the very east is kind of a large cold suppression. Probably a little bit of stormwater for this phase and some future stormwater for whatever happens in the future on the rest of the property. I think the warehouse facility will take roughly two-thirds of the prop, of the sixty-five acres. Somewhere around forty acres, maybe even a little less than that, maybe thirty-five. We have stormwater facilities which are not finalized yet, we're going through all our calculations and I know that was a condition of the plant, plant commission to get those in, of course, it also goes through full review with the DNR, any disturbance over an acre. Parking is pretty minimal, there's not a lot of employees, I think around eight to ten employees. So the.
That does talk about very, twenty to very.
Oh, ten employees, thirty according total, what one is completed.
Yeah, maybe that's the total build out, my apologies.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, it's a forty-three foot tall structure, it's a, again, I'm not, can't speak the language, but it's a concrete panel tip-up type building, textured panels, I think they're called. It's a, it's a large building, obviously, it's a three hundred thousand, like I said, and then two hundred thousand future to finalize. So that's the summary, we are planning a pretty substantial landscaping room on the south side of the property, shielded from the residents on the south side, and there's a little bit of egg there, and I guess it kind of shields it from traffic on Highway twelve going north until you get to the corner.
Is there a, there's a, there's a home between Ross Road and here, right? That, on the, on the east?
On the east side, yeah, that's residential lots on the east side as well. There's some trees over in that area, so that's kind of naturally buffered right now. And at this point, we don't have a lot of plans for that eastern two-thirds of the site, that twenty, twenty-five acres, it would be. Say we'll probably utilize a little bit of that low area for stormwater, and other than that, I mean, it could even continue to be farmed, I'm not sure.
Can I ask what the state's reasoning was for not allowing the access off of?
Yeah.
Doesn't make a lot of sense, I mean, the access on the north side, because that's too late by the highway right now.
Yeah.
Isn't the other side by that existing access, but they won't shed it already?
Well, that's off of property.
That's off property?
Yep.
But I, I could, what's the plan for that?
Well, that's where the, going to the ball fields and those other lots that are in between their lot and the church. So, I mean.
I can, I can help with that.
Sure.
The, the original request was, because we helped facilitate those meetings between the county and, and the state. The original request was that this is something that is really a good fit for the community. Low volume, even on a daily basis, it's nowhere near like a U-line or anyone like that for low truck traffic. The concern originally was is that this project would get slowed down by doing all these traffic studies and traffic warrants. And the original thought through the state was that there was tons of truck traffic, which there is not. The request was, your main, the main entrance would be on the north. And the request from, from the applicant was not, not the existing opening that's there today. But another opening between there and the stoplight. That you take a right, right in, right out, is the original request.
Right, you come right around the corner and then come right in?
Yeah, it was, it's on these plans. It's on, it's on these plans which are not directly applicable to the request tonight. Uh, that, that was quickly shot down, the request was for right in, right out.
What was their reason though, so they could do traffic?
Stacking. You, you bring, you're bringing trucks, you're bringing trucks to a signalized intersection. I'm just, I'm just relaying what the state's saying.
Yeah, I know.
Trying to argue with the railroads.
I like the original design.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you what the state's saying.
The only thing I didn't mind about it is how does that truck that's going north get itself?
Get what, Tim?
He's getting out, going north, how does he get itself, because he's gonna want to go to the interstate.
Yeah.
He's gonna come, come back through.
He's gotta come.
Through the lights, yeah.
That's how it's called.
It didn't, it didn't make any sense. How does he do a U-turn or go south?
Or do an entrance on the north.
So you might as well send a back walk to him.
Maybe do an entrance on the, on the west exit on the north, you know, something like that, where you go from here to the other.
So let, can I hear what the state had to say?
Go ahead.
The double-divided highway today, Highway twelve, it's signalized up in Arrow Building, which is the control. They're also concerned about the, the distance between the signal and the entrance to this on Highway twelve. I'm not speaking for you, Dan, this.
No, that's, that's absolutely correct. It was basically that drives, they're too close to the intersection.
They want to make sure that you have adequate stacking from the inters, signalized intersection going east. That you had adequate time for truck traffic to turn into your site and leave the site along, along with employees and the traffic that's going to be building on Highway twelve. Their concern was, which I actually agree with before I looked this over, but I'm not a traffic engineer. Is that as this gets built out, there's going to be confusion with respect to the existing openings there today. Trucks will be slowing down to turn potentially into the new development that they asked for. Oh, I missed that, I've got to get my speed up and come back out on the Highway twelve. And they were concerned about the traffic on those three access points before they got to the signalized intersection. So that, that's the summation of their approach as traffic engineers. And if you look at the land from the, from County Road U-U or Badlands all the way north, that's eventually developed. That the entrance is not signalized there today, that goes into the existing opening. And they just felt that by the time someone would turn in there, then start turning into this development, oh, I made a mistake, I need a quick come out, back out into the traffic. Now you're getting the other lane. So that, that's what the state's position is. I don't want to spend all of our time tonight on traffic, but it was due as a major constraint to make sure that you had.
Did they really have concerns over the north end?
No, that's the good news, and from my perspective listening in, they, you have adequate, you have adequate distance here from the signalized intersection at Arrow Building.
It's about fifteen hundred feet.
Yeah, and I think they said basically about where your, where your field opening is today, right, it's about.
Well, they said that would be okay, and we're actually another hundred and fifty feet.
To the east of that, yeah, yeah. So actually, that's a good plan, that gives your semis time to come in and out and get to this. And if they're gonna go hit the intersection, they're better to go through a signaling out of the south. So that, that's the discussion that was held on that. I think from, from the town's perspective and the applicant's perspective, I, I want to say I thought the state was very cooperative. Uh, you, you worked in some protracted traffic study that goes on forever, and so that's a net result of that.
I could just see a right turn, like, boy. Maybe first, I could, my opinion, it should be a right turn, like, when you're heading east on Highway twelve going into that complex.
Well, Louie noted, I don't know what to share with you.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
That's, that's.
You're gonna take it up with your staff.
I'm just thinking about the traffic on.
Oh, I hear what you're saying.
Oh, and that, that was part of their conversation. So if you're going eastbound on Highway twelve after the intersection, a turn lane will be put in, yeah.
Well, I think.
Oh, there will be one.
Yes, there will be.
There's one, there's one. That's, that was my concern.
They want to let you turn into the, from the west side, just turn in?
No, no, they don't want any access on the west side.
You can't have openings that close.
So I don't want to get hung up on traffic tonight unless the board wants, wants to.
No.
There's several big issues with the drainage, we talked about that, the drainage, drainage is there is a very low spot in the eastern part of this. Louie, I thought you did a good job of, you know, the plans that we have are conceptual about this could be built out, but you, you, it would be phased, it would start on the west side.
Yep.
And phased, you know, three hundred thousand on the west side, another three hundred thousand feet on the east side, could be potentially the size of a U-line type building, so people have a sense of scale when it's done. Uh, your dock door would not be on the north side, they'd be on the south side, so you get the sun and the, you know, drying rays there for, for safety purposes. And your parking would also be, your employee parking would also be on the west side of this building, correct?
The southwest corner, that's right.
So this is just kind of flipped for what we have in front of.
A little bit, yeah, a little bit, yeah.
And there is no bump out on here, that's, that was a graphic designer's concept of that bump out in the offices would be with this building. We talked about the rate finish, about the FAB type sandwich panel with a rate finish painted, like you, you know.
Is this like a, an Amazon distribution center or something?
It's similar, but it doesn't have the traffic and the turnover, that's like an Amazon does. They do a lot of work for Anderson Windows, so Anderson needs parts, they need them close by, but they don't need them daily. So they need kind of a backlog with their parts, is what I understand. So the turnover is not daily, it's not like an Amazon, and that's why the traffic is not like an Amazon, it's less.
So about the trail a little bit, so is that like an employee, is that a, is this?
Well, that's, again, that's a little bit of an artist's conceptual layout, yeah. Probably something that would be in the first phase, it might be in the second phase, if there's some water features. I suppose it, it could be something, but around the water feature. The site.
It looks like there's a barrel on parking for employees, or what if employees?
Well, again, that's overkill on that land. We're gonna have to call a little under fifty parking stalls in the first phase on the southwest corner, because we only have probably about ten to twenty employee arrangements, I'm guessing ultimately thirty to forty. The, the stormwater is roughly divided right down the middle of the site. So we will have stormwater ponding on the west side of the site as well. Infiltration is required by the DNR, so we'll have probably a dry type based on a couple of wet ponds on the side of the road, so. The setbacks are really large, because it's such a nice property, you know, I think a hundred feet is minimum, but we're gonna be three hundred feet on the south side, because we're gonna have the berm, and we'll have a hundred and eighty via dock, which will be largely hidden. And then the building itself. On the north side, again, was less, just a lot of room, so we can have stormwater ponds in the setback area and a little bit of green space before we even go in.
Great piece of property, you want to go have it, you want to have, you have that, you should have some on the south side. But we also mentioned that you could have berms, because it would be grading land, ten to twelve feet.
Yeah, yeah, ten to twelve feet or more, you know, we're anticipating that'll be a waste area for a lot of topsoil and kind of out there. Probably about a foot of topsoil based on the soil specs.
I guess the only other question I wanted to mention that I have, because it started, people are trying to have questions on this, like all this stuff, like cross dock facility, and this is not a cross dock.
No, it's not.
Like, that's where the truck traffic is so minimal. They bring their goods in, they're going in, and then if their client needs it, they break it out, put it in the small cross. Just as that, like any factory. So we wanted to come in tonight and talk to us about this separately. You know you have more work to do. Where, where you think you're at for your debt? Beating the weather.
Oh, boy, I, I don't, we still have to do borings on the site, we have technical borings, and that drives a lot of our civil work. So. Oh, yeah, I guess it could be as soon as, you mean monthly, or do you mean twice a month?
Once a month.
Once a month, so that, that would be the, the soonest, obviously, we'd be back the next month.
Sure.
Does he have to go back to plant commission? It's a different plan, so he should have to.
Well, plan, we can't approve this plan, this is all.
No, this has to be denied.
Yeah.
Because it's not, it has to be denied, because it's not on as a concept of that action on the agenda as a site plan.
Well, that, okay, that, that's my moving, moving this again, okay?
Okay.
Just quickly, most of the time we'll say, why don't you come in and talk to us separately?
Sure.
Should be before you spend tons of money on empty area and so on. Get, get the feeling of the board, see if they're for it or against it, or, you know, what that might be. Uh, I, I want to make sure if it's, if it's been noted as a site plan, right, this is not being approved, this is not a site plan.
Right. Do you have a concept approval process or just site plan?
Just site plan. So this isn't the end of the book, you can normally report on it from a concept.
Sure.
Have you known the plant commission approved, and I guess that?
They did. So we need DOT approval, stormwater calcs and stormwater management agreement. How many has to have that first before we can even, and we need lighting, landscaping and signage.
I'd like to see the two phases, you know, if you're gonna show the three hundred, the two hundred, show the difference on the site plan. Just so the board knows, that when we change the zoning, so that they find a great distribution center in here. Iowa went for three or four of the homeowners in Rod and Rods and visited, were there, to see what their thoughts were, huge distribution center building being there. And they were okay with it, just so you know, where do us say people live there at that time? Because it might have been five or ten years ago, and someone just waited a lot. Because it might have been five or ten years ago, and someone just waited a lot to do it. But just so you know, we may not see a lot of people concerned about it, and that's why.
It seems like they got a lot of trees and stuff like that, and...
Yes, it looks good.
I don't know that he needs to come back for the concept, if you guys agree that this is fine. I mean, this is pretty much what this is, as a concept, it just wasn't... I was told to put site plan on it, so that's what I put on, but that's...
The other thing I'd like to know when you come back for site plan is, for a month, what if you've done the stormwater now and then you collapse in the second phase?
Yeah, what I mean...
Are you gonna do it all now? What's the DNR required to be? I'd like to just go in the second.
Sure.
Where the employee parking would be with the first phase and where it would be with the second phase? You know what I mean? Because this shows the second phase, wasn't it?
But we just went through this entire process of Roberts and Hill, and Roberts and Hill are the same building. And we spent much of March, April, May, and a little bit of June going through the whole process. And in the eleven dollar, there were some issues with developers' agreement, and it was scrapped.
Really?
So I'm very familiar with this building and site and future parking. And what we did there, what I intend to do here is to cover all of the stormwater future development in the first phase. And make sure some, large ponds, but that's okay. It's a large building and a large market.
Have you taken your stormwater to the county yet? Have you talked to Tammy Traxler?
No, no, our stormwater first run was village hall. So I did talk to Kevin Brayball and asked him what the county review would be on this, and he indicated it wouldn't be. So I'll revisit that with him.
You might want to talk to Tammy Traxler, because there needs to be a stormwater impotence and to make sure they...
That's true.
And looking, we will work our way through the orders, whatever orders are tonight. Just setting that aside, I think I'm here, conceptually, the concept on it, I think this makes sense and okay. And we know you have a ton of work to come back in through.
Sure.
Site plan.
Yep.
And we need monthly, but we're always available.
And of course, you require the information to be submitted.
Two weeks, three weeks?
Well, you're probably gonna have to go back to plant commission first. And so when you submit to them, then they need seven copies at Ryan's office, and we need six copies here.
And we're gonna be talking about that tonight as well, as we've done with the SDA here. But we'd be able to, without me getting that in turn.
Yeah, definitely.
We could, like, sort of ask it, yeah.
Third Monday of August, so you gotta have all the stuff. There's no way he can get plant commission this one, because he needs everything in by Friday morning. If he hasn't done the stormwater with the county yet, there's no way that...
So you're probably looking at coming to the September plant commission, which is the twenty first, and then the first, our town board meeting, then October sixth.
September twenty first is plant commission.
When is the submittal for that?
First week.
The seventh, the seventh? You want it by the seventh, that Monday?
I don't get plant commission, she does.
Oh, when does she need it by?
She'll need it by that Friday, two weeks before, or whatever. I don't, I don't get into her deadlines, you need to talk to her about...
So by the four of the September? You should go and make that. And you want yours by what?
I want the same time. If they take them there, then I want them Friday, so we know.
Great.
Unless it has to go to the engineer, then I don't know, then the engineer decides when they need to sell. So if the engineer's gonna look at this, then those, all that, then the engineer would need to look at it before plant commission as well.
So I think you're gonna be, I mean, you've got a ton of work to do.
Sure.
You've got, you've raised the plan, your stormwater plan, all, parking lot, all... I know you're up to speed from doing this before, but as you do that, just keep calling us. That's the way.
Yeah, I'll talk to Eric first and tell him.
Notice the way dates or whatever, Eric, we're gonna be talking about engaging Eric later on tonight, so... You know, that's not gonna slow us down by saying you're gonna add another layer of bureaucracy there. He actually can help this process with his experience.
Oh, okay, so after tonight, he'll potentially officially be on board. How long engineer that?
Yeah. Yeah. Unless something goes tragically wrong.
All right, all right.
You did a great job, Phil, you said the other thing you wanted to share with us tonight, or with Steve, really, Steve wanted to know.
That's all I can think of for now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, be afraid to call us, believe me.
Okay.
Okay. As low and behold, with their next item, this discussion and action on...
I need a motion to deny the site plan.
Figure that motion?
I'll make a motion to deny it.
Figure a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
You gotta tell us why you're denying it, so DOT approval? Stormwater clogs and stormwater management agreement? Lighting, landscaping and signage plans, anything else?
Building location layout. Final traffic entrance.
Oh, well, that would be DOT approval.
Yeah. I think that's enough for us to deny, because everything...
All right, so DOT approval, stormwater clogs and stormwater maintenance agreement, lighting, landscaping and signage plans, and building location.
Is motion made for the second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. All right, anything else we need to do on exit tab? All right, a special action on contract for engineering. I sent out the latest contract to everyone that came from Paul Moller. And based on Paul's recommendation, that's ready to sign. Have me sign it, subject to approval of the board. So that's the culmination of all the discussions on engaging SEH. Any discussions on that, or?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Yes, that's a contract, but it doesn't tell us what we're gonna have to do. I read it through, not details on it, but I read skim through it enough to find out what we're having to do, and it doesn't say that.
Right. Well, the engagement...
So all it is, is a contract, you say this is the billing process and everything, which I get.
Right.
So we need to approve that, but now, I don't think we're ready to have work with these guys that answer that. Because we need to know what we're gonna have to engineer for doing in the future.
Which is what we do by letters of engagement.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think we have to have the contract on.
No, no, but I just, you know, I'm concerned that we aren't just gonna move forward without doing that, that's all.
So we're agreed, we have to engage, we have to set up the contract first.
Yes.
Which is whatever it is, correct? Then through letter engagement, we can engage Eric to work on projects such as this, which we need an additional expertise on. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the contract, which would be basically to allow me to sign on behalf of the town to engage SEH?
I'd like to have you make that motion because you've had all the meetings with him.
Okay, I'll make that motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve, with the town of Hudson, approve the existing contract, draft contract that's set for...
Well, it'll just be the contract, it's not a draft anymore.
Right.
So the contract with SEH.
Approve the contract to engage SEH, put them under contract with the town.
I'll second that.
Second? Second? Need further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Is there two reasons I have to sign right here, or is one? Okay. Where is the one with the lines to it? Is there this one there for me to sign?
Oh, yeah, right here. Sorry, I was looking at this other one. Your name was there, but it didn't require signature.
Okay. Do you want Eric to go with me?
I'll send it back to you or whatever. I don't know that I have all of Eric's stuff.
You can send it for me, and I can send it on back.
I don't know. I can find his email somehow. I think I have it from the attorney.
Well, if you do, please copy me, so I know, whoever's doing this, I know how we close the meeting. Okay.
I'll just send it to the whole board and see, you know.
Discussion action on general code review, town code.
So they said that they can bill it, so payment is due January thirty first, twenty twenty one.
That sounds like a win-win. Do we need a motion then to approve that?
Mm-hmm. So we can sign off on this and get it to them so that they'll do it.
Okay, do you hear that motion from the board? This is for the pagination, they call it, or the...
Yeah, you basically already approved it.
Yes, like thirty-three hundred...
No, we did approve it, though, so we need a motion to authorize general code to review the ordinances that are costing thirty-six ninety-five to be paid in twenty twenty one.
And we want to move the payment into the next fiscal year.
Okay, I also want to...
Okay, do I hear a second to that?
I'll second.
Second. The motion made for the second and a further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried.
You're tied on to me.
Okay. Okay, discussion in action on pleading contract for the town hall.
Oh, you can see that, the town hall, turn of gears tonight. Sorry, I didn't get it to you, I'm kind of weird with this last one.
Town hall?
I've seen that, the Royal Variety Commercial Cleaning that I invited them to, through... Also came in at three hundred, one day a week, three hundred and ten dollars a month, seventy dollars per service for extra cleaning, which is one of the same cleaning before election or after election. Pro cleaners was three hundred dollars per month, with seventy-five dollars per time, extra. And that Royal Variety Commercial Cleaning was a hundred dollars, so it'd be four hundred dollars a month, and I think a hundred dollars per time. So was that a three? Also gave us a pretty detailed proposal, which I like. And I would propose that this time, we go with also, because of all the, and how detailed it is. I guess the discussion would be for me, for what you guys think of that, and if you want to do like a contract, or a one-year contract, or a two-year contract, with the reviews and stuff.
Are they capable of coming in and standing for like a better term?
They are.
They are. So we need them to come in and clean meetings or that, with all this COVID nineteen?
The one thing with also is they recommended an initial cleaning, a deep clean. So I think they would really come in here and just clean everything up, which I think a lot of different blocks would be moneyless, but... I mean, I think they would really scour the place. And maybe if we do this tonight, maybe we could come through that for next, by next week, if I'm not too tight for them. I don't know if that's possible as a department, but I just got the proposals and... I was kind of expecting a little more out of the other, the other guys, you know, with the details and what we're planning on doing. But I don't know, I would like to set up a one-year contract or something, you know. Look at it as six months or something, and I wanted to give you a two-year or...
So having them come in once a week?
No, it's nothing.
I just need that one second. Now, is that gonna eliminate, Ricky, having to clean it?
Yes.
Yes, out here, now that's only out here and not the officer, is it?
Yeah, we still have...
We still have the office.
But you won't have the vacuum out here, shampoo, garages. In elections, like in November, this area gets cleaned up. You're carrying all that sand and stuff.
I have worked with also before, personally, for my doctor's city, and they were really, really, really nice to work with. That was for women cleaning, so it was a different view. They were really, really nice to work with.
You'll probably sign one of the windows to allow windows, so...
Yeah, well, you'd get tired of them all for that.
Well, we usually have a wood, we usually have a wood camp to do it, but they haven't offered me that.
So in their initial cleanings, they actually approved it, or should not. So Ken, what was your final sheet that I'll, because there's references to sheets?
Oh, it was that.
Yeah, she printed that off. And that's, that's you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, you used it.
That's happened to you in the email, but she printed that off, I don't think you know that. But... I can show it to you.
It was just detailing what we kind of expect. And...
Well, she came, I looked at her, and...
Yeah, she did. I gave her a tour, and she was very nice and told me everything that they would do, and she has some job specs right on.
She's, she's very...
This is the wholesale paper shop.
Right.
Yeah. So my official sheet says, "The town is requesting a fourth of cleaning, the town is obligated to make any progress." Request a clean once a week, for the service book, for the rest of the, that's why place covered, disinfect. Like, disinfect stores, all kinds of houses, top stores, clean here, here, on track. Need all the hallway, back to curb, and bottom hallway, must be one for this pump trap. Light the disinfect all colors, table windows, disinfect all board, house, and actually bars. We request a mature audit and provide documentation that, most requests are direct references and provide the home maintenance plans. Do we have additional cleanings necessary before elections, if possible, or after? We'd like to do a one or two-year contract with the few other companies, and we have that. That would like, R and B, I follow that.
We sort of go with a one-year contract, to see off your results.
Yeah.
Your job, you...
I think that's every time, because this is so...
Do you guys want a ninety to ninety-year, ninety-day review? Were we gonna have, or is there...
I don't have, you know, ninety days contract.
I think that would work, I'm guessing, like you said, she can't, they're not gonna lead it before actually, but that probably would clean right after the November election would just happen. That'd be a good time to do it.
Could do it. Well, they want to do it initially while it's actually, like, you said...
He said that she probably, they probably couldn't get in before to clean or after the autumn election.
I know, ninety days.
Ninety days, yeah, yeah.
Oh, but as far as that initial clean, I mean, if they're gonna do that as soon as it can, because...
Oh, okay.
Well, ninety-day review.
Right.
Right, which would be after the November election, which would be good, which would see how she could really clean this place when it gets super dirty and we've disinfected everything. I think that would work really great.
I'm okay with the one-year contract. I have one other thing that's missing here, who's their contact?
Who's their contact?
Who's their contact for supervising?
I'll relay, I'll be, that's okay.
I'm okay with that, I just want something...
And then you need to approve us having, for example, the month to cut keys, because they need keys. You wrote the bottom contract, so...
And they're gonna be, they're bonded, and we can give insurance policy and everything on file?
Do you want me to call her, or do you want to call?
And I, I, and I, I...
We'd have to email that to her.
Yep, we can email all that, so, yeah, I'm sure she's feeling familiar with all that, because I'm sure she works in the city of her borough.
They do the bank, they do the town, it's all right, so they have...
I'll put her in contact if you guys...
Okay, Jared?
Yeah, so Jared.
Yeah, I'll need to talk to her to get everything signed, to keep that signed, to report it every year.
Perfect.
We have everything done, then we'll send it.
It's right here, so I needed to sign.
Because the word is saying one year.
It doesn't, but that's...
It doesn't say that.
That's like...
It doesn't say that, but you can't leave it.
Yeah, we'll just stand right at it, we're gonna sign it, and that's good for one year.
I'll head right down this way.
It says here that this agreement may be terminated or canceled... It says here that this agreement may be terminated or canceled at any time with a minimum of thirty days written notice from either party. So, I mean, I don't know that.
Yeah, we really have to have a, a white area.
Just approve the contract and decide that we own.
Like it or, yeah.
We give them thirty days or sixty days or whatever and say, you know. And I think that's, I don't, that's, I mean, that's what it is, it's not.
But what we do, we do it by mowing and things, it's easier, easier to, uh, we're future speakers.
Well, that's not what this is though, it's a thirty day, there's no thirty days out for mowing.
That's true. And she wants to change that, take it off, you know, more than the contract, sure.
So we just need a motion to approve the plan, where it also, that's when we're deciding more normally.
I would move, move to the, clean the contract with also. Including the monthly cleans, plus the additional seventy dollars, every year, and a hundred and thirty dollar fee to be discussed, and whether it is done. Or can supervisor number three, so you can't want, you want supervisor not to be the contact with the three six.
And?
Then you need to provide.
And keys, so then you need to authorize me the contract for sanding, I'll be keys.
And the, yes.
Do you hear a second to that?
I'll second.
Mr. Captain? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.
Oh, Don, can I just?
Oh, I just, I just signed up for. I don't know, so I'm new.
Just make sure I get it.
Yeah, I'll see quite good.
Cause and I need all the insurance and all that stuff.
We wanted to work with secondary, okay?
They can just call the office when we're, when they, when we're in the office.
Good, just tell her she can contact us Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday night before, or whatever, yeah, if she has questions or needs to be scheduled or whatever, you know, whatever she might need. Don, can I just let everybody know, I did receive an email back from Sarah Cole at Clifton Larson Allen for the audit. I sent, Don, I signed the management rec form, which is the form that states that they did their job, and they're submitting a six copies of the two thousand nineteen financial statement. They'll be mailed to us within two weeks. So, and then that's all done. And I assume the bill will come at that time, if we have that bill.
Any other, any additions or requests?
Um, street signs, which was the second half of the street signs. They've already arrived, now it's coming garage track. Thursday, all of the first half, which is everything sold to the railroad tracks, is pulled together. And I told Joel once, said start to put it back, he should be involved, and I wanted to see what it looks like. And he'll start putting these together. Fortunately, some kid broke his finger that looks in, in the highway, the safety department, and he needed something to do. So he put it to do like this, otherwise they probably wouldn't be together. So you got them all together, I was amazed, but like, this week, you got them all together.
So, please, please match the old ones.
Uh-uh. Need even anywhere near like that, yeah, cause it's a single plate with a different bracket, everything, that's why. And with one of them, or two, or probably about five or six of them, where somebody had stolen one of the sets of plates. And so they were the newer ones, but yet, you gotta change your boat out, you couldn't just change one, cause it's a different, oh, set, it's a different. So it must have to be the old stuff, good recycling. Now we don't have to worry about it. And I would like to get rid of all of those feelings of the shit that we, coming to watch on this twenty second. And when it's the Ross Road, I would call someone. Yeah, I guess so, it's just like, what was the other one here, down off Curry Lane?
More embarrassing.
For a year, and I noticed it with my wife, and I would often look at it, it's like, the pole and everything has been gone, I don't know how long, probably about a year. But I thought, well, heck, I'm not going to order another set of plates when we're just about to do this, so as soon as they're done, that will, uh. Somebody just called this week to want to report that. And they will continue, and they will continue to be stolen, every place, and plan in the future. When we see one of those, the office staff can just call Joel in Hill, order them from three D, and then come in and Joel put that.
Maybe we satisfy that demand by selling some of the old ones.
No.
Saint, Saint Joe did that, they sold it for ten dollars a piece, it was like, really?
I got a tiny lane on, on in my garage, but we gave it all away. That, uh, I came home one day and I had like three of them, and I'm like, where'd you guys get those? This was the one.
We set them all up outside the town hall.
There at the town hall.
Took three days and they all.
Took them down and gave them to my kids, my kids were in the corner when they were making that movie.
Oh, jeez.
They were.
I had three of them here too.
All right, thank you, we want any other issues? My detective skills, I think the person stealing the Jacob's lane is a person named Jacob, but I'm not sure.
Sam, Sam.
We have a kitchen. All right, do you want to do insurance?
I would.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. I don't know, I just didn't run God, I don't know if we're going to get better or worse in the September meeting, but I think, I think this work on our painting report will do.
High three, okay.